Good evening, everyone. Township of Lacey, welcome to our caucus meeting. I'll read the statement and we'll say the Fledge of Allegiance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act in accordance with Public Laws 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacey Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. The tribes? The Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, proclamation for 50th anniversary of Ryan's Service Center. I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, work hard, and whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise, and whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and passion for what they do, and whereas when we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture, and whereas because this country's 28 million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs, and whereas the Township of Lacey supports and joins in the national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, create jobs and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Peter Curatello, Mayor of the Township of Lacey, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee, do hereby proclaim June 3rd, 2017, as Ryan's Service Center 50th Anniversary and invite all citizens to join in the celebration of this and all the local businesses of Lacey Township. Please come forward, we'll take some pictures. Congratulations on behalf of the Township. Fifty years, amazing, amazing. Through several precedents and through ups and downs in the economy, as you say, charity starts at home. And if you're signed last February, you're a shop owner. If you're a waitress, you're a long woman in the township. So God bless you. I raise my hand. Thank you.
Tom, why don't you get the whole family up and Judy and kids, come up.
Yeah, definitely.
It's been a family business for 50 years, so let's get everybody.
Congratulations. Thank you very, very much. Yeah, go first. Thank you very much.
I already gave them four more.
Can I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
You know, at this time, I'd like to add ten comments from my colleagues on the committee. Committee McQuinn.
Jack, Jeff, Judy, you know, the kids, I'm sorry, I don't know all your names, but, you know, I want to congratulate you because I haven't been in town 50 years, but I've been here just about 40, and I remember how, you know, the station was back then, how much it's grown, you know, now it's just doing service and all. I remember vividly Jack running out every time I pulled in and pumping my gas and then, you know, running back in and taking care of the cars and repairing the cars, and then, you know, Jeff, you know, moving up the ladder and taking in, slowly learning and taking everything over, and, you know, you've been an anchor in the community, you've done a fantastic job, and I certainly want to wish you the very best and congratulate you. We're fortunate enough to take Jack in his second career and, you know, have him here in the town doing a lot of what we, you know, rely on the people to do, and he's done a fantastic job for us, and we hope we have him to make it to 50 years here too as well. But I, you know, wish you the very best and, you know, we'll see you on the 3rd, and it's really, it's an honor to have the 3rd be, you know, Ryan's Service Station Day here in Lacey Township, so.
Absolutely.
We'll make sure you get a lot of people coming by and seeing you, so, but best of luck to you all, so, thanks, Jack.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, Giuliano. Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to read a little something that, we have a nice letter here that I thought should be read, because I've known Jack and his family for a long time, and they're a great family. You guys should be proud of him, he's one of a kind, there's no doubt about it, the most generous, and some of the things I'll read is the truth of what that man has done for people in this town. Ryan's Service Center was founded in 1967 by Jack Ryan, when gas was 28 cents a gallon, a complete tune-up was $20, and if you were short on the cash, a handshake was all you needed to pay your bill on time. Jack Ryan is a man of many of us know, not only for his automotive expertise, but also for his years of service to the community with Lacey Rec and other township organizations. Originally located across the road from its present location, Ryan's did all the police towing, including fishing cars out of lagoons and lakes, for more than 25 years. Many of the Lacy's teens of 70s and 80s credit Jack Ryan for giving them their first job, including Jack's son, Jeff Ryan, who started working at the garage at the age of 10. By 1988, Jeff Ryan would assume ownership and plans would to begin to take shape for a newer and bigger and modernized Ryan's Service Center. By 2006, those plans would become a reality with the opening of the State of an Art Automotive Center located at 603 Route 9 North in Lenoka Harbor, directly across the street from the old Ryan Building. Currently serving more than 200 clients a month, Jeff and Judy Ryan support ongoing training for themselves and their employees in order to provide the very best possible service to their clients. A golden anniversary celebration is planned for June 3rd, 2017, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at Ryan's Service Center located at 603 Route 9 North. On behalf of Ryan's Service Center, the Ryan family, their employees, and the valued customers who have supported and encouraged this hometown business for all these years, we respectfully request that June 3rd, 2017, be proclaimed as the golden anniversary of Ryan's Service Center. Your support of Ryan's Service Center's 50th anniversary will demonstrate to the people of Lacey Township the value and contributions of local businesses to our community, to our town and to our community. Thank you very much for your consideration. That, I think, says it all about the Ryan family. I appreciate knowing you all these years, Judy, I've known you for a long time. Jack, I knew you back then, and the things that were said in here, no doubt, the way you did it, and the old-time school was the way we did things, and it paid off in the end. Am I right? Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Committeeman Kennis.
Yes, it's not easy or fun being in business in New Jersey, especially a small family business, so I wish you the best of luck in many more years.
Thank you. Committeeman McDonald.
I've known Jack for a few years now, but I never knew that he owned the Ryan Gas Station. I've only known him as part of the recreation, and he's a gentleman's gentleman, and I can imagine when you were running this, running that place, the handshake, the whole bit, that was, that's how it was done. And I think you guys, the old timers, it's what made Lacey great, and we hope we can continue that. Thank you again, Jack.
Great, thank you very much.
I'd just like to say a few words. Our families go back a long way, the Ryans and the LaRays, and him and my father were very dear friends, you know, they were the old timers in Lenoka Harbor back then, and he employed a lot of my family members, including my brothers and my cousins and stuff like that, that was the place he went and hung out. You needed strange car parts and everything else because everybody was always tinkering, you went to the junkyard in the back there and you got them, and he's really is a true friend to the family and a great man of this community. So I have to thank him.
The Lacey original, that's great. Well, we invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting, it is riveting, and I'm sure you will have plenty of entertainment, but somebody told me you have a dinner date, and I don't want to spoil your dinner, you're invited to stay, but I think it's prime rib night tonight at Cafferty's.
Oh, at Cafferty's.
Okay. So we will now move on to item number two.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Jack, make sure that you enjoy that meal, huh? And then get the bulletin.
Right.
Item two, presentation from Rotary Club of Forked River Doggie Derby.
Mr. Angona.
Please, I should have done that. Thank you.
That's a hard act to follow.
Yes.
All right, well, my name is Tony Angona, I live at 246 Quail Lane North, and I'm here tonight representing the Rotary Club of Forked River, and I'm here to invite our mayor and committee members, along with the superintendent and assistant superintendent of schools, to be our judges at our doggie derby contest slash family fun day on Sunday, June 4th, at Jones's Road Park. It starts at 11:00 and it goes on until 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and I know you all look forward to being judges of this contest, right, Gary?
Some of the things you put me in charge of, like kissing a dog and different things like that.
That's the mayor's job.
I just want to, I want to reinforce that that was because I was the mayor, and it is the mayor's job.
We have a new mayor, yeah, Mr. Mayor.
What does he have to do, Tony? Has to kiss the dog?
Best kissing dog.
All different categories.
And Tony, based on that, knowing that he's doing it, I will definitely be there.
Absolutely, you got it all. Now, this year, it's a little bit bigger and better than it was in the past. For example, this year, we're going to have all food courts, it'll be a larger food court, like food trucks, we're going to have 40-plus vendors for people to mill around, and, you know, not just dog and not just pet items, but just a variety of merchandise to be sold throughout the park. In addition to that, we're going to have a play area for children, the Army National Guard Recruiting Office is coming, and they're bringing a variety of games and fun things for children to do, we're going to have a bounce house as well, we're going to have a visit, we're going to have a visit from everyone's favorite dogs, favorite police and firefighting dogs, I don't even know the name of these two dogs, but I know the kids do, and they'll be there walking around, waving and shaking hands with the children that are there attending. In addition to that, we're going to have a disc jockey, so we'll have music. WBMJ will be doing a live broadcast from the field, we're going to have a display of classic cars for people to enjoy and bring back some, a little bit of nostalgia in their lives, and all in all, I think it's going to be a fun day for everyone to attend, so I hope all of you will attend and help judge the contest. To give you an idea of some of the contests that we're going to have, we did away with the best kissing dog.
Vegas.
People want to ask, Mr. Mayor, okay? But we're going to have the most happy dog, the best dressed dog, there'll be a costume parade of dogs, we'll parade the dogs around that are dressed in costume, and then you guys will pick the winner, best tricks, and also the dog owner look-alike will be the winner of our contest. And we'll also have demonstrations from canine demonstrations as well, so it will be a fun day.
I could tell you without a hesitation, more people have asked me, and I'm sure I'm not alone, so you can all just chime right in, about the Doggie Derby than virtually any other event in our township. We certainly have dog lovers here, I know all of us own dogs, and I know a lot of people look forward to this event, Tony, so I'm looking forward to it too.
Again, it's June 4th, 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., and it is a great event, it is, you know, because it's an event that includes the entire town, all, every, all residents of our community, and gives us a chance to bond as a community, walking around together. It's a small town, we're not that big, and it's just great to see that we're a downtown, wholesome area to live in, and what Rotary loves to do is be part of this town and, you know, contribute to the town in many ways to make it a better place for us to live and raise our families.
And you've done that, from your outreach to our community, to Rotary Park, at Heathrow Park, and on and on, I mean, you're one of the premier civic organizations in our town, everybody, I mean, I could stay in lockstep unison, whatever, everybody appreciates what we do. We're definitely looking forward to that day. Will it be rain or shine?
Rain or shine, yes.
Perfect.
Can you please bring back the dog kissing, so we can get a picture of the mayor kissing the dog?
He might be able to do something.
I did that every year anyway, I bring my dogs, it's all good.
Mayor, if I could, Mayor, Tony, first, I mean, it's a great event, there's no doubt, just like the mayor said, everybody really enjoys it, and I remember last year, I think the weather was kind of iffy, and it was still a great crowd there, which was really nice to see, but moving aside from that, I just want to, you know, what the mayor said, thank you for all you do, but also recognize you because we're coming into Memorial Day weekend, and the flag program that you, my secretary reminded me today, is coming up this week.
It's going to be bigger and better this week.
And that's, people have to know that all those flags that are up and down Lacey Road, Route 9, are not just put up by individual people, that's your organization, your volunteers that run that throughout the course of the year, and it's such a tremendous thing to see, especially on such a solemn day like Memorial Day, so I just want to mention that to the public, and thank you and the club members for what you do on that program very much so.
You're doing it, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, Pine Barrens Modeler Club.
The Pine Barrens Modeler Club uses brick wall area for quite a few events with regards to their flying of their remote control electric planes, the wingspans are up to like 80 inches, and they are now looking to do a water fun fly and use our third lake from the beach in the parking lot to have an event for their club during a day, a weekend day from 8:00 a.m. until 2:00, and they need to ask permission, obviously, to use our lake. They said there's be about 20 to 30 people, they're not gas-powered so that they can be on the lake, they'll be, they're electric remote control, and they're looking, and they'll have monitors in the water as well in case one does not make it off back to the beach to monitor this, and they're going to have parking monitors and everything to keep the traffic under control, plus they do supplies with a certificate of insurance. So, they didn't pick a date yet, because I told them to ask first, and then they can coordinate the date, obviously, through the recreation department depending on, you know, when they're looking to have it based on the availability, so I just needed to know if the governing body was going to authorize this.
I have no problem with, I've seen them fly up at, up in the Lair Park, I fly up in the Lair Park a lot, it is really something special to go watch and see, and you just stand there amazed with what they're doing.
I did too, and a lot of people followed.
Yeah, it's absolutely amazing, and I think it would be great for the township, so.
Just need a motion to approve then?
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, request to place trailer on property, 969 Capston Drive.
We have some residents that are still suffering from the loss of their home during Hurricane Sandy, and for two years, they've been trying to move along with the building process, rebuilding of their home with their contractor, and they're having some issues via through the contractor, and at this time, you know, they're, they've been living very transient, you know, out of hotels and so on and so forth, and as this building process is going to start to move along, they would like to be on-site and, of course, try to save some expenses, and FEMA is willing to help them out with relocating them on-site with, I'm going to call it a mobile home, a trailer, on their site. They're seeking permission to allow us to place that there temporarily, of course, they'll coordinate anything with water and sewer through the water company, and hoping that they can keep the home there to, the CO is issued, obviously, at this point, they don't know when the CO is going to be issued, so I don't know if we should keep this open-ended or put a timeframe and have them come back to us and ask us again to extend it.
I think that'd be six months.
One thing I want to put on this, because I know the street I pass all the time, and this, this has been in a start and stop situation for well over a year now, so I don't know if, it sounds from this letter like it's still the same builder, if they're trying to work out their issues with that builder, I'd like to know whether they have permit set of an issue downstairs yet, and this is actually going to start moving forward now, because I have no problem with trailers, we've done it for a lot of people, but I don't want to see a FEMA trailer arrive and all of a sudden it's there for two years, because you're going to start hearing a lot of pushback from other neighbors out there. This was not a year-round house to begin with, as far as I know.
Oh, it was.
So, I mean, I have no problem with giving them, okay, to give them six months with the trailer there, because we did it right down the street for somebody else that followed through and got it done, but I think we should give them six months and make sure the permits are issued, and that there's a contract to start this house before you really dive into it.
Right, so you want me to, so are we authorizing the six months now at this point or no?
Proof that they have a contract and they have taken out building permits.
Before we issue it, if only they got those, then we go forward.
Yeah, yeah, because I just don't want to, you know, it's one thing for a lot of recreational trailers go in and we try to, you know, help people, and I want to help these people, but I don't want a FEMA trailer to become a residence, you know, in any neighborhood in town.
Using it alone, it's fair to the other neighbors.
Okay, all right, no problem, I will have Loretta reach out. And then I have an add-on for this agenda, some of you may or may not be aware, on Tuesday of this week, we opened up the bids for the Railroad Redaway Extension Project, we had four bidders on the project, and the lowest bidder was P&amp;A Construction, we had a base bid and an alternate, the alternate is mainly due for the trail portion of the project. The total bid came in, it's $2,692,507. Now, as you know, we're getting a million 60,000 from the state of New Jersey and 500,000 from the county, so the township's obligation is 1 million, 1.1 million dollars of this project. I do have it on to award this evening, within the next 15 days, the contractor is obligated to have to me the contracts back, the bonding and all of the payment bonds and so on and so forth, and then we will set up a meeting to proceed, yeah, a pre-construction meeting and a notice to proceed. They have six months to complete this project pending any weather conditions or extensions that have been granted by the contract, by the township. Any questions?
Nope.
entertain a motion?
To adjourn, any more add-ons? We'll do the resolution later.
Move it.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Tim.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to go right into.
To Township. Township of Lacey, Township Meeting, May 25th. Read the statement, salute to the flag, and we will have a moment of silence. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Lacey Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number one, first reading of ordinance 2017-14, authorizing bonding for the 2017 capital projects and equipment.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements in the acquisition of various capital equipment, appropriating $1,160,150 there, authorizing the issuance of $1,102,140 in bonds and notes to finance this, a portion of the costs thereof. This is in line with what was approved during the budget process with regards to 2017 capital projects and capital equipment list. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo.
Yes, item number two, first reading of ordinance 2017-15, authorizing a lease with the County of Ocean.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, authorizing the lease of a portion of block 1837, Lot 4.01 to the County, motion in accordance with NJSA 48,12-14. We are leasing a piece of land to the county, which is, if you go down Bob Court Lane here behind Recreation, but when you get to the stop sign on the left-hand side, we'll be leasing a portion of that lot to the county for them to expand their cell tower service. This is a no-cost lease to them, and we get to utilize space on the tower when we need to, if we need to expand our police services as well.
Move it. Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo.
Yes, item number three, first reading of ordinance 2017-16, amending Chapter 335 zoning.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 335 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled zoning. This is an update to the additional multifamily inclusionary zones with regards to our COA settlement, there were still some things that the courts have come back to us saying that we needed to make some other terms and settlements of the agreement for the Fair Share Housing Center.
Motion? Move it. Second?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo.
Yes.
Number four, the tabling.
Tabling?
Tabling number four, there's still some items I need to work out with, with the agreement.
Item number five, Resolution 2017-153, authorizing request for proposals for Housing Rehabilitation Program Administrator.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, authorizing the advertisement for and receipt of proposals for the Housing Rehabilitation Program Administrator Coordinator. This is in regards to our COA settlement, the Township of Lacey needs to appoint a Housing Rehabilitation Administrator in order to follow through with our third round obligations with regards to, and I'm going to use as an example, about 10 years ago, we did housing where those qualified income residents could get various improvements done to their houses, you know, roofs, doors, windows, those items that would, you know, save the structure of the house, handicap ramps, and we would need somebody to oversee and monitor that. It's a CDBG funds, those are the only type of funds we qualify for now, but in accordance with COA, we need to appoint an administrator to do that, so we'll be going out for RFPs and looking and soliciting for somebody to monitor that for us.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo.
Yes. Item number six, Resolution 2017-154, certifying the review of the 2016 audit.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, certifying to the local finance board that all members of the governing body have received the annual municipal audit for the year 2016. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo.
Yes. Item number seven, Resolution 2017-155, authorizing the appointment of summer laborers.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of seasonal employees for the Department of Public Works. These are the young men that we hire to assist the Public Works Department during our summer months.
Move it. Second? May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo.
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution 2017-156, authorizing the execution and submission of a dam loan application.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Dam Restoration Loan Program for the improvements to the Bamber Lake Dam spillway. I had, with CME, have made application to the DEP's dam loan program with regards to trying to correct the issues we have out at Bamber Lake Dam, I figured this was one way to get low-interest money, sometimes it is full forgiveness money, I don't know which way we're going to go yet, I don't even know if we're going to get approved, but this is just authorizing us to move forward.
Move. Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo.
Yes. Item number nine, Resolution 2017-157, authorizing a place-to-place transfer of a consumption license.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, authorizing and approving a place-to-place transfer of liquor license number 15123300-001-006 to the Captain's Inn Restaurant Company Incorporated. They're not relocating, but technical words are place-to-place transfer. It's an expansion of premises to include the additional decking that they had put on that joined the tiki bar with the bathhouse, plus to include the old North Dock Pavilion area, so they're just restructuring their application and putting their footprint, the new survey footprint on file with the ABC, so it's known as a place-to-place transfer.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo.
Yes. Item number ten, resolution twenty seventeen one fifty-eight, supporting the legislative action to reauthorize and extend the National Flood Insurance Program.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, urging representatives from the state of New Jersey to support the legislative action to reauthorize and extend the National Flood Insurance Program. This program is due to expire on September thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen. The expiration of the program obviously could cause catastrophic loss of insurance coverage against flooding, which is the number one cause of property damage throughout the United States. So obviously, the coastal municipalities have, are joining together to hopefully get this reauthorized and for the, for the legislatures, the federal legislatures to reauthorize it so that it does protect, you know, the millions of people that need flood insurance and have it.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo.
Yes. Item eleven, resolution twenty seventeen one fifty-nine, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second?
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo.
Yes. Item twelve, resolution twenty seventeen one sixty, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of one million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo.
Yes. Item thirteen, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of May eleventh, two thousand and seventeen.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen, motion to approve township meeting minutes of May eleventh, two thousand and seventeen.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen, motion to approve raffle license applications for the benevolent and protective order of Elks of Lacey and the young people in recovery of Ocean County. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have an add-on. It's going to be resolution one sixty-two. It's a resolution to township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to P and A Construction for the Railroad Avenue Extension Project. And again, the total amount of this project is two million six hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred and seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo.
Yes. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. First, the Lacey MUA, to remind everybody, I mentioned it the last time, they're still doing, they're working on flushing out the hydrants. It'll go on till the end of July. As I said before, it's a house king cleaning project, so it has to be done. Any discoloration or any different things in your water, please contact the MUA office at six nine three eight one eight eight, and they'll be more than happy to help you, but there should be no issues, as we've done it in the past many years and every year. Secondly, Lacey Township Municipal Alliance, tomorrow is their senior luncheon. Patriotic theme, wear red, white, and blue, of course. Friday, June thirtieth, is their next luncheon. It's luau theme. I told Heather I would mention that. Also, another thing, Pheasant Run, there was a letter sent to Casey Parker, director, our Director of Public Works, from Pheasant Run Homeowners Association. Dear Casey, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, the Fire Wise Committee, and the residents of Pheasant Run, we, we are once again thanking you and your crew for the great cleanup of our community for the third annual Fire Wise Cleanup Weekend held on May sixth and seventh. Without providing the equipment and the manpower, we could not have had all of this debris removed from our common grounds. Once, thank you once again for the job well done. That is all the property on the New York Pheasant Run that they keep clean and they keep the, all of the leave down. Kevin, were you involved in that?
I was in the yard.
You in the yard, okay. But that's what we do. Every year, we keep that cleaned up. That's about all I have. Of course, summertime is coming, so that's a great thing. All of our upcoming things, which I'm sure Tim will be talking about, I'm looking forward to. Personal note, I'm a very proud parent this week. Sunday, my daughter graduated from Caldwell University. She made us very proud. To do that is, is, as we know, is a hard task, and now she's going on to graduate school to get her bachelorate and everything else, so it's going to be a great thing for us. But Sunday, she graduated. Monday morning, I brought her to Newark Airport. She went to Italy for ten days with the president of her university, invited her to go, to study abroad. So that was great, too. But everywhere my daughter travels, and her travels since she'd been in college, everything seems to follow her. She was in Paris when Paris had the problems, Amsterdam, and now everything that's happening, you know, over there now. So that doesn't make me, but I'm happy that she's enjoying the things in life that she deserves. One other note, which I'm proud of, this twenty-eighth is Saturday? Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. That's my anniversary to my lovely wife of thirty-nine years. I'll be married this Saturday, so that's a, that's a great thing. Nineteen, nineteen years old. We met when we were seventeen. We've been together since then, so you figure it out. But that's all I had. I wanted to give a few personal notes, Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Heartfelt congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah, you deserve it.
Thank you.
Committeeman Quinn?
Thank you Sue, who is an absolutely wonderful, beautiful woman. There's a lot of patience.
Yes, she does.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Just an announcement from the police chief concerning this year, he's decided to participate again in National Night Out, which I believe is the third year that it's taken place. And I just want to read the announcement. It says, "Lacey Township Police Department will be participating in this year's National Night Out on Tuesday evening, August first, two thousand and seventeen. The event will take place rain or shine at Gilly Park between the hours of six PM and eleven PM. So far, the Lacey Township Police Department, the Ocean County Sheriff's Department, and New Jersey State Police will be participating, along with all our local emergency service organizations. Child IDs, face painting, a canine demonstration, and a drone demonstration are among the activities that are being planned. In addition, Escape Park will be open from six to nine PM, and a live DJ will be playing music. Furthermore, the Lacey Township Recreation Director, Department will be showing an outside movie at approximately nine o'clock that night. Food will be provided during National Night Out. The event is still in the planning stages, and additional activities are forthcoming. If anyone has any questions regarding the event, you can contact Lieutenant Paul Sullivan at six nine three six six three six, extension two five seven seven, or the Recreation Director, Jim Wyland, at six nine three eleven hundred, extension twenty-two oh three." This, this is an event that, you know, it's, it should be a real nice community event if, you know, you want to get out there, bring your families, and, and really spend a couple hours out there and learn a little bit about the town, learn a lot about our police department and recreation department. So I'm looking forward to August. As a matter of fact, that's my wife's birthday, and I won't tell you her age, because I won't make it to my thirty-ninth anniversary next year. This, we're coming into Memorial Day weekend, as we were saying earlier, and we have our Memorial Day Parade coming up this, coming Monday. Just so the public knows, at nine forty-five on Monday, Lacey Road will be shut down from the Methodist Church up to Town Hall for the parade. The parade kicks off at ten o'clock on Monday morning, and it'll leave at the Methodist Church. So if anyone's interested in marching in the parade, your groups, yourself, your kids, just show up at the Methodist Church at about nine thirty on Monday morning. And then we're going to finish off the parade on Monday at the Bicentennial Park out here next to Town Hall, having our, our annual Memorial Day Ceremony for all those men and women that fought throughout the years in different conflicts and gave up their lives for, you know, everything that we have the freedom to enjoy these days. So if you get to the parade, you know, please make the effort to come up to the park, because it's really a very, very nice, you know, somber event that I think is something that we should all try and, and extend our time and be there for. So next Friday night, we're having another skate park event over at Gilly Park with the police department. The police department, Recreation First Day Municipal Alliance have been doing these functions over the last couple of months, and they're going to do another one Friday night between the hours of six and ten. It'll be all lit up. There'll be a DJ there. It's a great event for your kids to come out to and get them, you know, involved in something on a weekend if there's nothing else for them to be attending that night, to keep them with other children and keep them out of trouble. The late, the child seat safety check that we've been talking about for the last couple of meetings is going to be coming up on June twenty-first. That's if you have a child infant seat in your car and you're not sure if it's installed properly. It's well worth it to go over to the Lenox Harbor Fire Company on June twenty-first between the hours of four and seven, and you'll have the police officers from our Lacey Police Department, as well as a couple sheriff's officers from the County Sheriff's Department there, you know, checking it out and just giving you instructions and helping you along if you don't know exactly what you're doing. And last of all, the Lacey Explorer Program, which is our program running by the police department here in town, and it's also in conjunction with the program that's run at the county level with the sheriff's department. We're still looking for a couple of young men and women, age fourteen to twenty-one, who are looking to take and go into some sort of a career in law enforcement in their later years. This is a great opportunity to kind of get the feel for it, get some training, and really have something very good to show on your resume. So if you're interested, you can reach out to Lieutenant Sullivan over at the police department, six nine three six six three six, and that's extension twenty-five seventy-seven. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Committeeman Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, one announcement, that Oyster Creek is holding a community information night on Monday, June fifth, from four thirty to seven. I try to attend that every year. I've been on the committee. There's usually, they have a lot of, you know, a lot of workers from the plant, in addition to a lot of management, and they're very forthcoming with information. And considering that the plant is still due to close, I find it, I pick up a lot of good information, useful information for the township when I go to that event. So again, it's Monday, June fifth, open to the public, four thirty to seven. And finally, I hope to see everybody at the Memorial, Memorial Day Parade. That's all I have here.
Thank you. Committeeman McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, the Fugger Firehouse brought their new truck up tonight. I think that we're all very, very impressed with that. And my oldest son was in, he's a firefighter in the Air Force, was in for Logan's graduation. I'll talk about that in a second. And I said to him, you want to come see the new fire truck? He said, sure. He was duly impressed, because it's a supertanker, and quite frankly, the Air Force doesn't have any supertankers. So, or at least where he's at now. So he was duly impressed and thought it was great. I too have a couple of personal things here. Yesterday, my son Logan graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology, already has a job with FNG Mechanical, and I just want to know that there were about, I think, three other boys from Lacey who graduated yesterday from Stevens Institute of Technology with all degrees in engineering, not Bachelor of Science. There's only four colleges in the country that give out an actual degree in engineering. It's Stevens Institute of Technology, Vanderbilt, Mud, and California Institute of Technology. And it's a little bit different than Bachelor of Science with an emphasis in engineering. So it's, it's a very special degree. And my thirty-second wedding anniversary is June first, and I'm not the easiest person in the world to live with, so.
No. That's a shock.
So I just want to say thank you to my lovely wife, Laura, for playing up with me for all these years. And most importantly, this is Memorial Day. If you see it in person in uniform, just thank, just thank them. That's all I have.
Congratulations to your son.
Thank you.
I'd like to open comments by saying to all the Lacey residents that attended the American Cancer Society Walk at Veterans Park last Saturday, along with the governing body of Berkeley Township who hosts it at their Veterans Park. It was probably the most well-attended that I've seen, and that was with the specter of bad weather. It, really, the weather, it really doesn't matter for that event. I mean, the people that are there are survivors. You're a survivor the minute you get diagnosed. I know Mr. Bender has done a lot of work on this over the years. He's there in the audience tonight. I'm sure he'll speak about it. I want to thank my colleagues for going, and I've got to tell you, it's, when you read the proclamation up there, it's not easy to see a lot of the people in that crowd, as one out of the three of us, as I always say, statistically are going to be touched by cancer, an apex family member, a friend, or ourselves. So for all those efforts, we really appreciate that. Last week, I was with the Director of Public Works for about three and a half hours. One of the things we did as we toured the town was look at the progress of Bayfront Park. Bayfront Park, I mean, our town is known for our parks. Bayfront Park is not complete yet, but in its incomplete form, it's magnificent. The workmanship that has gone in to that park, the stamped concrete, some of the workout area, the pavers. Casey Parker took me around. He showed me the gazebo that's going to be going up over there, the scenery that's over there. We're looking very forward to cutting the ribbon and opening that park, because that park doesn't only signify another great and beautiful park in our township, it signifies the resilience of this community to come up from the ashes, from sandy. And that's what that park means to me, and I think that's what it means to a lot of other people. So we'll be keeping you informed as to when that will be. But the progress right now is remarkable, and it is a postcard. I would like to commend, as I often do, our police department. Once a month, as part of my position, I go and I make a, a report at the prosecutor's office, Ocean County Highway Traffic Safety Officers Association on Public Health, Public Safety. And the person that was there representing the State Department of Highway and Traffic Safety at O'Connor had said that Lacey, out of all of the county, was really above board in their, in their outreach and education efforts with specific regard to texting and driving. So it's not only an enforcement component, but it's an, it's an education component. I'm out and about in high schools around the county. We did Lacey first. We had Lieutenant Sullivan over there. We had the chief over there, and that took place a few weeks ago. Only too happy to bring that public service to our kids, especially during prom time, so that we can get stories of graduation, like our deputy mayor and our committemen are just reiterated with their children. So, you know, we're just trying to save a life and, and do a public service. So I really commend our, our police department for that. There's larger departments in our county, and there's great departments in our county. But ours, this particular time, and again, not only with the effort, but with the grants. That particular grant is one of many that our chief got, and that particular grant was for fifty-five hundred dollars. So it's at no direct cost to our Lacey taxpayers. And it really does help keep us safe and educate the young people, who are primary offenders of texting and distracted driving. I would like to say that on June seventh, at our library, at seven PM, we have an addiction medicine doctor, Dr. Genasia, who I've heard speak many, many times on the opioid epidemic. If you have somebody that you know in your family or a friend that is affected, this is a free, a free outreach on Dr. Genasia's part. He's coming down. I've seen him speak at our high school. I've seen him speak around the county. Feel free to ask him questions. He's well-versed up to the medical level on prevention and on treatment, and anybody that has any questions about addiction, I strongly encourage you to go there. Have, bend his ear for a little while, talk to him. I know him personally, and I know that he's willing to help. He does outreach like this all the time, and I don't think he charges anything for it. Again, being a liaison to our veterans, I've got to say, Memorial Day, a somber time. We remember the fallen. If you're a veteran and you're within earshot of my voice, please come. Walk in the front with us. Be a part of that, that parade. We want you there, and we want you there in Bicentennial Park, and I'm hoping we get to work on Bicentennial Park next year, too, and spruce it up just a bit. But, you know, it, it is important. And like Committeeman McDonald said, if you see somebody, thank them, because it's important and it counts. And I'll conclude my comments with that and open the microphone to the floor. Yes, sir?
Kevin Flynn, Davis Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Well, you had the opportunity to come down to Public Works.
Yes, I did.
And you spent quite a bit of time in the yard going over our equipment. What do you think of it?
I did. And it was, it was an eye, it was eye-opening.
Why don't you tell the rest of the committee what, what you actually saw?
I did.
What kind of shape is the equipment in back there?
I didn't see every piece of equipment, but our Public Works Director, as he's always been to me, was courteous and inviting. He took me out. We toured everything. We saw dumps, dump trucks that were rusted and that had some.
Brings rotten, bodies rotted out.
We did. We, we saw things that are in need of repair and/or replacement. And he then took me around to the park. He took me around to some sites that were recently done, aprons, cul-de-sacs, where you did paving jobs. So I'm fully aware of the scope of the work that you do. I'm fully aware of the needs that you have. I enjoyed going around there with him, and I'm going to make a point to go there more often. He's always had my cell. I've always had his. This is my fourth year on the committee. Any of our department heads are encouraged to call any of us at any time. I know you have needs, Kevin. We, we all know.
You kind of skate around what I asked you, Pete. What, what, in your opinion, what What, in your opinion, what is the condition of the equipment that you saw? Tell the rest of the committee.
I said that these...
It's in pretty bad shape.
Well, here's what, I'm not going to let you put words in there. Here's what we're not going to do. We're not going to negotiate in public.
No, I'm just, why don't you just tell them?
That's not fair to you, and it's not unfair to DPW employees. We don't do that as a policy. I saw them. I don't have the level of expertise with that equipment that you do. That's not a cop-out. I saw equipment that needed repair. I saw equipment that likely needed replacement. I know how much grass you cut. I saw one grass cutter there. You have a lot of work that you do. I was here early in the morning the last two days. I saw you here at 7:30. You were doing the mulch. There's no question about the work, the good work that all of you do. I know that there are needs over there. We know. I keep saying, "I," that's a mistake on my part because I'm one of five. Mayor notwithstanding. We, colleguallan together, are going to visit this next year. We're going to have internal discussions, and we're going to see where they go. But for you to ask, for, let me just finish. For you to ask for an inordinate amount of a limited budget that we have is like you talking into that microphone and saying no to the Chief, saying no to the Municipal Alliance, saying no to Jimmy Wyland over in Recreation. We have departments that have needs everywhere, and we have to be fair and equitable to all of them. We're not trying to slight anybody. We've made major purchases in the past. I know we're going to make major purchases again, sooner probably rather than later. We just did a lease-to-purchase for $110,000 piece of machinery last meeting, if I'm not mistaken. You saw a $750,000 investment in a fire truck earlier this evening, right before the meeting started. We're doing the best we can, Kevin. I know you're trying to pin me down to it, but I'm not going to do public negotiations.
All right. I'm not saying negotiate, but you said next year. Well, you know what? You know right now that there's a problem back there with the equipment. So, instead of waiting until January, you've got the rest of this year and the beginning of next year to start working on that plan. Don't wait till the last minute. Start on it right now.
Kevin, let me jump in here, okay? Because, you know, the conversation you had last month, in my eyes, was wrong, okay? We do a hell of a lot to buy equipment for Public Works, and for you to stand up there and tell this committee that we don't do anything for you is wrong. See this paper? This is everything that we've bought in this township, equipment-wise, since I came on board 14 years ago. And I went through every single one of these things. And for you to stand there last month and tell me we don't buy trucks, there's 22 trucks in here that we bought in the 14 years that I've been here. Brand-new trucks. Peterbilt single axles, Peterbilt tandem axle, tandem dump trucks. We bought you a roll-off. We bought you multiple 450s, multiple 550s. There's only like two of them.
The bigger trucks are the ones that are starting to fall apart under...
Two or three of them. Let me finish, let me finish. There's only two or three of them that are actually pickup trucks. And you're talking $50,000, $60,000 for a Mason dump for, you know, a 550 truck. So, we're spending a lot of taxpayer money to take and do what we have to do to provide you with equipment. That's putting aside the loaders we've bought, the backhoes we've bought, the small excavators, the lawnmowers. We bought a couple of lawnmowers in the last couple of years. We're consistently buying equipment. Where I find the problem, and it's a discussion this committee definitely have, because when you buy, when we buy you a fire truck, what's the first thing we tell you? We're taking the other truck off the road, and we get rid of that truck. In 14 years, there's not a truck that has come off the road when we buy all this new equipment back there. And that's not going to happen anymore. If we buy a truck, there's a reason for it. You're pleading your case in front of us, telling us that the truck is unsafe, we have to replace it. We bought it, we replaced it, now it's time to get rid of the other stuff. We don't need mechanics to fix trucks that are 25 years old by any means. So, that's going to cut down our labor costs. That's going to cut down on our part costs. That's going to save the taxpayers a tremendous amount of money. If you've got all these new trucks, put the drivers in the trucks that they're going to need, double up the drivers if you have to, make it work. It always worked before. I saw the trucks that were out there the day the mayor was coming in because I was in Town Hall. You've got three tandem dump trucks lined up out there, which were originally purchased by this town prior to me coming on the committee, when the governing body had the Public Works people doing all the room paving in this town. You don't do that anymore. There's no reason to have those three trucks replaced or to have three tandem, four dump trucks out, you know, tandem dump trucks sitting back there showing us how bad they are. They're bad, get them off the road. You've got a tandem Peterbilt sitting in the backyard there. You've got a single axle Peterbilt. That's enough for what you guys are doing back there. So, if you want to debate equipment, I'm ready to debate with you. But I'm going to have this conversation with the governing body because if we buy something, the other one's coming off the road. And that's, I don't care whether it's a lawnmower, we put another excavator on the road for you because you needed it. We've done everything we can. But for you to come in here and continually criticize us, I'm done with that. I'm not interested in that. You want to put it in public, put it in public. But do what you're supposed to do.
But it snows, Gary. All those trucks are out on the road, plowing.
I don't disagree with that. We have people that we hire on a part-time basis, not for nothing, Kev, but we had, I believe, one major snowstorm this year, maybe one or two other trickle-down snowstorms. So, if we have to take and do something for those couple of days, if we have to rent equipment, we have to get more subcontractors, we'll do what we've got to do to provide the services to this community. But we don't have to go out and buy a Peterbilt truck that, a single axle Peterbilt truck costs us $161,000. A double axle truck, which is a dump truck, which you have back there, costs us $204,000. These are not small-ticket items anymore. We can't buy them.
They're also not just dump trucks, Gary. They have salders in them, they've got snowplows on.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
They're wholly used vehicles.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. But we don't need, with the 550s, the 450s are doing a hell of a job when it comes to the snow. But no, we still have to have the 1979 F-250 pickup on the road, and we have to have the old utility body trucks on the road because there's still some life left in them. Well, there's no life left in them when you come in here and start arguing with us over the budget that you need this, this, and this. But then the next year when we buy this stuff, all of a sudden, they realign themselves. They're back to life, and we have mechanics working on them, keep them on the road. We're taking them off the road. We don't need them on the road. If you tell us that they're not safe, we want them off the road. And we'll have that discussion with Public Works very shortly because I have all this stuff to go with the committee. So, that's all I have to say.
I can assure you, a few of those trucks have been taken off the road because they are unsafe.
Kevin, I have a list here.
They were repaired or replaced, a couple of them trucks, and Pete was told that they're off the road. One of them is only good enough to plow snow because the body's ready for it.
Kevin, we...
We don't want it. Take it off the road.
I know what I'm saying. It's been addressed.
Because Kevin Theorian stood here and says, "Okay, well, it's an unsafe thing." Well, the last thing this committee ever wants to see is for one of our employees to get hurt. So, take it off the road. If we can't get a job done today because we're missing one truck, I guarantee you we'll get it done tomorrow. We'll get the work done. You guys do a fabulous job for us, but it's not an open wallet that we can just keep pulling money out of because it's taxpayer money that we have to fund the stuff with. So, we're going to do the best we can, but I'm not going to get into an argument with you every time you decide, "Well, you're not getting what you want."
I'm saying, now you have the rest of this year and the beginning of next year to put a plan together to try and replace them.
And who says we're not?
Plan numbers.
That's right.
But you said, "Oh, we're addressing next year." Well, you can still...
We want to adjust the budget until next year, Kevin.
Kevin, just let me tell you, the day that you got the mayor back there last week, I said, I was in Town Hall, I drove back there. It looked like you had them set up for a parade of misfits because you took every piece of garbage that we have that should have been off the road many, many years ago and had them lined up next to each other. Okay? They're all not safe, get them all off the road. We don't need them anymore. And that's the direction this governing body's going to have to go in. We'll give you the equipment that you need to make sure it works, but we're not going to take, we're going to follow the same procedure that we follow with you guys at the Fire Department. If you want a $750,000 truck, there's a truck coming off the road. If it's that in need, that means you don't need the other truck.
That was actually two trucks. That one truck replaced two trucks.
I understand that.
The other one is 49 years old, so...
And that truck that we saw tonight is absolutely magnificent. And so, that truck will do what two trucks did, according to Dennis.
Yes, and it saved the taxpayers' money because if you would have bought them separately, you'd have been around $1 million.
I totally agree with you on that. But the reality is, if you kept those other things on the road, we're going to continually have maintenance, we're going to continually have bills, we're going to need mechanics. We don't need that. If you have an issue and the truck is not safe and the truck can't be used, get rid of it. We're done with it. Public Works has got to get rid of these things. Because, you know, we've always had three mechanics, we could operate with three mechanics, but we're not looking to create more positions. We're not looking to do anything that's going to increase our size. You do a great job, but you've got to do it with the tools we give you. And that's, you know, I don't want to argue with you on that, Kev. That's my position, okay?
And Kevin, let me say, listen, and I think you would hear Casey reiterate this. I have a tremendous amount of respect for both him and his father. His father is one of the, to me, one of the fathers of this township. Anytime that he wants, that's why everybody has my cell phone number. I respect him. I know he invited me back there. There's no issue. There's only goodwill up here and good... I mean, I think when you come up and you question people's intentions, I know that these gentlemen and these people up here, we have goodwill. If we could, we would buy everything new. We cannot just lay 5% down and mortgage the life of the town away. We lose our credit rating, we lose our AAA. It costs more to borrow money moving forward into the future. We're going to visit these things. Nobody's saying we won't. I'm on camera right now saying that we're going to visit it. We will do what we can do. I never, I admire you and your passion. You know where I live. You plow my cul-de-sac. It's your area right there behind ShopRite. And it's done perfectly. And it was done perfectly long before I ever had a political position here in the township. And I know it'll be there when I leave. And trust me, my wife and daughter, we appreciate that. I know the work that you do. Trust our intentions are good. I know yours are good. I know that you've been in this town for many, many decades. I know you have a good heart. You have my word. We're going to be trying our damnedest to work with you. But we're not land-based in anybody. We're not singling anybody out. We hope you don't do that to us.
Well, all right. My next question is, the Fire Departments and the First Aid Squads were asked for monthly reports. Who came up with that idea to ask them for the monthly reports?
Monthly reports about what?
The monthly call-ups that you guys had directed me to ask them.
Who came up with that?
I think it was me.
And may I ask why?
Well, because I think it was the last meeting or two meetings ago, we paid, we were supposed to pay up $150,000. And so, we just wanted to be sure that the criteria is being met because it's taxpayers' money.
Well, if it wasn't, somebody would be going to jail on our end.
I understand that. Understand that. But when you're paying out, we were supposed to pay out $150,000. Veronica and I had a conversation. It turned out to be what, $70,000, Veronica?
$142,000, I think we paid out.
But did we really pay out? Didn't we find some people at work?
Well, it balances out when I have to take back funds from those that have dropped out. Yeah, so I don't really...
That didn't meet the 5...
Didn't meet the criteria.
Yeah, yeah. The best...
So, we're just checking.
It was like $65,000 I got back.
Here's the thing, and I've talked about this time and time again. We are facing, with that plant closing, the squeeze of the money in this town is going to be immense. And that's why we're turning over rocks that are just, everything we can look at and we're saying, "Why are we spending the money here? Why are we spending the money there?" So, when we get a bill like $150,000, we go, "Hey, let's look at this. Is this what we're supposed to be doing with the money?" Obviously, yes. It's a contract, the township, the people voted on it. Okay, let's just make sure that everything's right. We've also asked for, no, we've talked about the same thing, talked about the same thing. So, yeah, that's all.
So, you're only looking for a one-time, one-year...
No, no.
Monthly, monthly reports.
Monthly.
Does he do showing up?
Yeah.
How do you need it monthly when they could just turn it in at the end of the year when they turn in their LoSAP paperwork instead of putting more work on everybody down at the Fire Departments or the EMS squads? I mean, they're answering calls, they're going to more meetings, you're dumping more stuff on them, and you guys were all said, you know, you have more obligations, so you gave yourselves a raise. Well, the Chiefs and everybody else down at the Fire Departments and First Aid Squads aren't getting a raise. They're doing it for free. They're answering more calls, more meetings they're going to. As this FireWise thing, that didn't exist a couple of years ago. So, there's more meetings for, RADA has to go to. You know, there's more and more stuff being dumped on now. They're not getting a raise, but you gave yourselves a 46% raise. And I did find out, it's not 40%, it was 46% raise. They're not getting a raise, but you're asking them to go to more calls, more meetings. There's other stuff that they do, and now you're giving them more pit work to do that they're not getting anything else out of. You want to know what calls we have? All the calls are, you want to find out, a nice score.
We're just double-checking, that's all, Kevin. We're just making sure, we're just watching. We're just watching the taxpayers' dollars, which they're charged to do.
If something's wrong and they get caught, somebody's going to jail for...
For possible...
No, that's what happens.
Okay.
For LoSAP, somebody's going to jail.
Okay. But we're...
I don't think anybody would be risking a chance of going to jail and falsifying numbers.
I would agree with you. We're just here to watch out for the taxpayers' money and just making sure that the criteria is met. That's our charge. That's what our job is. Kevin, we have an auditor that audits every part of the town. There's no, the auditor doesn't go in there like the FBI and look for untoured behavior and try to get people prosecuted and sent to the Gray Bar Hotel.
You can see the monthly reports. If you look at it for people who are showing up, they're irrelevant because it only comes up once a year. You have an entire year to make your 100 points, so they could make them all in two months. So, why would you request them to give a monthly report when they could pull it out in the last three months to get the 100 points? You're just asking for more work out of the volunteers who are not getting paid. I mean, if you want to know what calls are going to, give me all your phone numbers. I'll call you as up every time you wait.
No, no, no. We're just, like I said, we're just watching the taxpayers' dollars. That's our job. That's what we're charged to do. Just making sure, that's all.
All right. Thank you.
That's it. Yes, please, come forward. Name and address, please.
Diane Corral.
Who?
I'm the owner of 308 Sinclair Avenue.
Can I ask you, Ms., to speak into the microphone? I apologize, I just can't hear. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, gentlemen, who did attend the Relay for Life to support that you give survivors. We greatly appreciate it. I come to you over 12 years ago. My daughter needed a residence. She had a divorce. And my family is all down here in Lacey Township. And they said, "This is the place to come." So, we bought a home, 308 Sinclair. And my granddaughter was raised here, went to the high school, grammar school, high school. And I was very upset when, two weeks ago, I walked out of the premises that I had thought that my daughter, a cancer survivor, works very hard to maintain, planting, cutting grass, painting the inside of the house, painting the outside of the area. Pride of ownership, we believe in. And I walk out and I see a structure being put in the neighborhood in the back of us, a 26 by 30, 16-foot-tall lodge. 16-foot. The neighborhood, the average, not average, 90% of the homes in this neighborhood are They're all ranches on a slab. And she walked down to what I... And I happen to show you pictures.
Sure.
And she's showing the... What we walked out to is a drive-in theater on the back door. I was a homeowner. You know, I'm very upset that something like this was allowed. Now I called immediately the code inspector, and he came down, and he said, "Everything is in code." And a few more were in code. So when I investigate, I woke up and found that the square footage on the house is... The square footage on the house is 1,416 square feet. City Code says you only can put up a facility that's half the size of your principal. So I questioned that. I came down to City Hall, I went to your tax assessor's office, and I said, "I'd like to know the square footage of the house at 307 Claremore Avenue." And I was told 1,116... 1,416 square feet. I went down to zoning, and I asked them how, you know, how they approved a 26 by 30, 16-foot-high shed, garage, whatever, on the property. And they told me, if I wanted the information, I'd fill out an OPR. So I filled out an OPR. No problem. Was told it takes seven days to process. I mean, the permit was issued April 24th, so it's not... They have it on the archives, whatever. Seven days later, I pick up half of what I requested. They didn't have the other items that I requested on the OPR. And then I go down to building, and I said, "You know, how can this be legal? Zoning, building, what's going on?" And they went and they pulled some records out, and they said, "Well, with the addition that he had put on his house..." And this is an 82 by 100-foot piece of property.
Excuse me, what size was that? What size did you say it was?
It's 82 wide by 100 foot deep.
The property.
The property. It's a total property.
Right.
Right. So building now tells me that, no, no, with the addition he had put on, it's not really considered a principal structure. The principal structure was actually 1,416. But an addition that he put on made his footprint now 1,688 square feet. So by him taking 890 square feet to put up a garage was legal. I... You know, so anyhow, you're losing out on quite a few, quite a bit of square footage. The house was purchased in 2004. He's been paying taxes on a facility that is 1,466, when it's actually 1,688. So if you need to buy some equipment, maybe we better check the taxes.
The garage.
Now, when I was down there, I spoke to Christopher Reed. And I asked Mr. Reed, that in going into your chapter 335 point zoning, article number three, I asked him, did he ever go to the facility, or did he... Did he locate before zoning the approval? And he told me, "No, no one from... No." He has not, and no one from his office has been to the location. Now, in your paragraph C, it says that the factors that you can have a garage up to 16... Or a structure up to 16-foot in height, up to. I don't think there's any reason for a 16-foot-high building, a house that's only 13-foot-high. I mean, you can see from the neighborhood, some of those pictures were taken from Bay Avenue, and some of those pictures were taken from the other side of Sinclair. So it's not like it's just our backyard. Neighbors are all against it. So it says here that the determination whether the accessory building is architecturally compatible will be determined by roof lines, placement of windows, doors, colors, and siding. And that it is to be reviewed by your Department of Community Development... ...in connection prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. So they got the zoning permit, but your Department of Community Development did not go out to see that this garage is dwarfing the house.
Let me just interrupt you there, because there's no requirement on the part of any township to go out. We couldn't have that kind of manpower on hand to send out to look at every application. Let me just finish. We require...
It's in your laws.
It doesn't say we have to go out. It requires that we have a certified plan that comes in, from an engineer, showing where the building is going to be on that site. And the rest of it goes based on setbacks, your height requirements, which were all listed in our zoning. I just wanted to clear that up.
It says here that the structure has to be architecturally compatible with the principal structure.
Correct.
And it's not. It's bigger than the principal structure, which is more... It is beige, the house is beige.
Right.
However, it has a nice bright red roof on it, and roof red trim. And like I said, I... The man who owns the house is like 5'4". Why do we need a 16-foot in a residential area? I mean, if you want to build a barn, we've got the pine limbs, go buy yourself a farm. But in residential area where the houses are on slabs, and I think if you look at some of the pictures, you'll find that the guttering is now focused towards the back of my property. It's spilling off, you'll see that that's less than 5 feet away from my property. It's... The building is 6-foot away, but the extension out above for the guttering comes down, and like I said, it's pointed to the back of my property. That's the big...
Is it flooding your back of your property?
I'm getting more... Yeah.
Well, that would be addressed. I mean, if that's... She should call downstairs to the zoning officer.
I intend to. I'm... What I'm upset about is, like I said, I just don't think that anybody in a residential neighborhood, if he owned a 2-foot house, a two-story house, and he put up a 16-foot shed, that's compatible. But when you own a 13-foot house, and you've got to put up a 16-foot garage, in addition to this, he's a mechanic. And for seven or eight years now, we have lived with... In the driveway, on weekends, nights, especially in the summer. And it's not bad. It's not bad, because there's a house between where he's working on his friends' cars in the driveway. Now, he's got a two-car garage, 16-foot-high, and it's a steel structure. No insulation, a steel structure. And like I said, that type has to have a French drain. You can't have a 26 by 30-foot building with two gutters and one pointing on my property. A French drain, if you're going to put that side of the building, needed to be put in. Because where is he going to direct his water flow? We're on slabs. It's not like, you know, I've got a little crawl space underneath me. Can't have that kind of volume of water. And we received 3 and 1/2 inches, right, two days ago? We're getting another inch and a half supposedly today. You know, it's an edifice. It was a nice neighborhood, well-cared-for backyard, well-cared-for house. And I feel bad for my daughter, the work that she's put in there. Single mom, divorced, teenage daughter, that she's a cancer survivor, that kills herself to make the neighborhood better. So I would have appreciated it if someone from the Department of Community Development had kind of looked at the situation and said, "You want 16-foot-high, and maybe no more town, knowing that the area only handles 13-foot houses, and maybe questioned if you could take it down a couple of feet." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I spend hours and hours out there in my yard. And at nighttime, when I go outside, I have a spotlight for my dogs, that's a motion detector. When it goes on, it now bounces off this monstrosity and shines all over the yard. It's unbelievable. I mean, you can't even sit there... You can't even see those 100-foot pine trees that are down this road, over this thing. And it's just very upsetting to me, because I go into my yard, I have Christmas lights, white Christmas lights on the back fence, I have a gazebo where my grill is with lights around it, I have tiki torches, I have a little fire pit. And I want to go out there, I want to sit on my patio, I want to enjoy my yard that[1678.33]